Good evening and welcome to the December 3 meeting of the Barrington Plain. This order is Paul.
Captain.
Captain Yellow here.
Hello, President.
Page view and approval of the minutes, nineteen twenty-four. And a motion to.
I'll move that we accept the minutes.
Paul.
Captain.
Captain Yellow.
Yellow. Motion of updated subdivision regulations. First, I'm going to open this document. To adopt the updated subdivision. That motion.
Second.
Paul.
Captain.
Captain. Captain, aye.
All right.
Okay, extension request for two fifty dash thirty-nine dash NR dash.
I guess it is.
Discussion, there been any changes? Own or?
I think there's been a lot done.
Yeah, they finished up around the house most.
Yes, my question is, you will complete the conditions. Are those subject to CO or? The conditions that were pending.
It was cleaning up the equipment that was everything he had. I don't know if anybody's been by there. See anything around the front.
There was, he wanted to put a road into the setback. So, just stuck it away.
The driveway, but it's a driveway. It's off the.
For future use, I think.
But how will they even get in the back?
It goes, it's a, it becomes a shared driveway was what was shared up in the front.
If we want to relitigate it.
No, it's already completed.
It's all set. It's approved project. The one-year extension.
Well, but what I'm concerned about is, were there anything in, any of the conditions that were, had to be done before this?
I'll make that motion to grant an extension.
Did, sorry. The question was, has anything changed?
No, it's still neighborhood resident. Second.
I'll say the second.
Second then. Full call.
Captain, aye.
Captain, yellow.
All right.
And I believe he put in there, he's looking at relocating the truck business property.
As I remember from two years ago.
That's what he said in his last.
Okay. He had talked about doing that, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Back then, yeah. Next item is, continued cases from November sixth, two three four dash five seven dash five seven two V for sub. This is Lemos family, Oak Hill. Forty-six, forty-nine point six acre lot, Village District.
Evening, everyone. Scott Wolf from Beals Associates. Just a quick update for the board on my part for this evening. We did issue revised plans based on the last meeting we had with the, with the board. There was some commentary on the yield plan and the site plans. The majority of the revisions made are for preparation, hopefully for review by the towns engineer. So, we're hoping that the plans, if they have not, go out, go out shortly. So, the intent was to not really speak on those this evening. Now, the two items that I would like to discuss are, the first in my part are the minor revisions I made to the yield plan. At the request, I believe, of Mr. Allard. The right-of-way for the conventional yield was somewhat located in the wetland buffer. That has been revised to the extent possible, so it's out of the majority of the wetland buffer, obviously, except for the one crossing location. In addition to that, I have done some coloration to add slope designations. I believe that was the question of Mr. Chairman. The orange designates any slopes over twenty-five percent up to thirty-five. The red distinguishes anything above thirty-five. So, really, I think everybody understands the existing condition of this, the road is cut in somewhat between the ledge. That's the only area of thirty-five percent. And really, the twenty-five percent areas in the rear are pretty minor. Just to illustrate that the lots are okay, I did add house locations and driveways for you to see those, that they are certainly buildable, viable lots. So, hopefully, we can move from the yield plan. So, we have a guest speaker tonight. We have Stephen Choak. The board requested a hydrogeological study and he has performed.
Do you want to? Is there a mic up there?
Yeah.
Oh, I can't see it.
Yeah.
Let's see what he's sure.
Yep. So, I'll turn it over to Stephen and he can go over the hydro study and address any of the board's concerns.
Welcome.
What is a mic? The mic. I can do this. I'll have them. Put that over here. Steve Choak and Julie.
Welcome.
I'm a hydrogeologist. We're with Exeter Environmental Associates. Been doing this work for quite a while and we were asked to do the hydrogeological study for this development. One of the things you'll notice, it was a desktop study and not a study with a, with an actual field investigation. And that's because the, the project is over a glacial drumline. It's over glacial till, hardpan. So, it's not something, the zoning ordinance cites the, the objective of the hydrogeologic study to look for, to examine the transmissivity of the aquifer, the thickness of the aquifer material and the extent of the aquifer. In this particular case, the aquifer is really just the fractured bedrock that underlies all of Barrington. And so, you, there is no benefit to putting in the soil test borings, if you're going to say, well, we have ten feet of till, twenty feet of till. There's no sand and gravel underneath the till. It would be, if there was any, the top of the till. Areas where we have, of course, the aquifer is more like Pine Grove Cemetery south of Route nine. So, similar to the, the study that was done off of Young Road in the past year, we opted to do the desktop study and that's really looking at, what's the ability of the bedrock aquifer to support the development? And what we do is we look at the amount of recharge coming into a given area versus the amount of water that might be withdrawn from that area. I didn't want to look at a large radius of area that this could be compared to. I wanted to be as conservative as possible. So, we looked at the amount of water that could be recharged just over the twenty-one acres of lot fifty-seven dash two. And that calculation is approximately twelve million gallons a year. Then we look at how much water might be withdrawn by fourteen. And the figure I came up with was one point four million. That's using six hundred gallons a day per house. In reality, when we look at metered systems, you know, if there's a development that's put out a community well and has a metered system, the actual use is more like two hundred gallons a day. So, that, to say that we're going to withdraw one point four million gallons a day is exaggerating by about two-thirds. And then, the other factor, which, just to be conservative, I didn't mention in the report, is a lot of that wires actually, it goes back to the septic system itself. You know, anything going down the drain. So, it really doesn't leave the watershed per se. So, the bottom line is, the, the fourteen wells can be supported by the fractured bedrock aquifer and they're not going to have noticeable effect on anyone else's water supply or the area in general. One of the factors we also took a look at would, would be the density of the septic systems. My understanding that there's a concern about that and that's actually a benefit of having the glacial till. If you put a high-capacity septic system in a, in a sand and gravel aquifer, you're going to have nitrogen leaving that system and migrating. There's a dug well, why, that can be a problem. One of the benefits, actually, of installing a septic system in the glacial till is it's not going to create a, you know, you're not going to have a nitrate migration issue. One of the things, this, this diagram just shows where the wells are, but can you show It's, the lot fifty-seven two doesn't show up really clearly.
But it's right here.
Yeah.
It's in the turquoise.
The turquoise, yeah. You can see the topographic slope of the land goes down to the south, southwest. So, it's not tilting, it's not sloping towards the neighboring properties along Oak Hill Lane. So, even if there were to be some nitrate migration, it's not heading towards the neighbor's wells, which I don't know if they're installed in, over, you know, in the till or if they're installed in the bedrock. But the other advantage of bedrock wells, of course, is that they're separate from the over, so they're much less susceptible to contamination.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question around the twenty-one inches per year. With the, the USGS study on it, it looks like, from what I could see it, it, it's twenty years old at this point. And I was curious about relevance on that, because when you look at twenty-one inches per year, I mean, we have months at a rip where we don't come anywhere near that and we're, we're just coming out of a hugely prolonged drought.
Well, it was either last year or the year before, we had fifty-five inches of rain, I suppose. Remember, it rained all summer long. So, I mean, you get some, that was two years ago, yeah. So, you get some variety. I mean, right now, we are in a dry spell, but there's a lot of storage in the bedrock. And that's actually something I didn't mention. But if you do a calculation of a two percent porosity, in other words, two percent of the rock is capable of holding water, and you take a look at, let's just take a look at twenty-one acres. That's roughly, if you take forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet per acre, multiply that times the twenty-one, and multiply that times roughly, say, three hundred feet of thickness of the fractured bedrock, and that's, comes up with a cubic feet of that area and you multiply that times seven point four eight, because you got to convert that to gallons. And then, you multiply that times point zero two, because you're just looking at two percent of that. That actually comes out to forty million gallons of water that's just sitting below lot fifty-seven point two. So, there's quite a bit of, of storage in there and I didn't really want to bring that into the equation, just to be conservative, but that's the answer to the question is, for instance, during this dry spell, are people's wells going dry? If you have a dug well, yeah, you might have some problems. But if you've got a three, four hundred foot drilled well, your water level might go down from, say, if it's normally ten feet.
Oh, sorry. Thought I turned that off.
If your water level's say, ten feet, it might go down to twelve or fifteen feet. That's where we're protected.
Mm-hmm. I, it was just one of those, I was curious about the.
Yeah.
That, and I'm like, okay, I'm looking at a twenty-year-old study. What's that calculate out to? And then, what's the recharge on a well once it's been?
Yeah. And that study was kind of neat, because it was based on stream flow.
Right.
So, it's not like a modeling thing. It's something they'd measured. And that's the recharge rate that has been calculated. But what's going to happen with the climate in the future? Yeah. This, that's, that's a good question. We're going to have more extremes. We're going to have more wet years supposedly and more drier years. But north, I mean, northeast isn't predicted to be drier, so that's, I suppose, good. But you don't, you just don't know.
Or worry about the stormwater studies, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that was, yeah, that's true. And that's the other thing I didn't mention, but I'm sure Scott did, that I forgot to mention is, I'm presuming the requirements are that there's no stormwater, no additional stormwater leaving the property, right?
It looks that way, yeah. Even in, I think Reach two hundred was, the calculation was for less there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions? Any more questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Very helpful. One thing I was surprised to see, actually, is the average well depth is four hundred feet. I had an old pounded well.
Yeah.
Old days, I just pounded it in.
Yeah.
It was ninety-five feet deep and I was getting fifteen gallons.
Yeah. Well, a lot of people feel that the old pounded wells are a lot better, because when you're hammering these things in, the fine grains are going into the fracture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a neighbor who is four hundred feet and he was getting a lower flow continuously. And I guess they came back and they fractured. They have a method of fracturing the, upside the casing, I guess, to, and he increased the flow quite a bit.
Yeah, with high-pressure water.
That's what they used? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just as an aside.
Yeah. Well, my neighbor drilled five wells, eight hundred feet deep, and they were all dry. And I thought they were getting taken by the well drillers.
I guess.
I have a, one of my water level meters goes down a hundred and fifty feet. This was back when I was able-bodied. And I checked all the wells and they, the buzzer didn't go off, they were all dry. And they ended up hiring a dowser who said, yeah, down to this spot, three hundred and twenty-five feet, you're going to get sixteen gallons a minute. And they were very close. And as a geologist, I have no idea how that.
Is he a certified dowser?
It was a she. Yeah, which surprised me too, because I don't know why, but I think of dowzers being that.
Yeah.
We did that on our property, fifteen feet away, hundred and fifty feet, no water. Moved fifteen feet over, thirty-five, thirty-five feet down, right on bedrock, twenty-plus gallons a minute.
Bazing.
Yeah. Hey, Jules, can you help me back here?
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
So, that's really all we had for this evening on this one, unless there's any other questions.
No, I got your, we got your, I saw your traffic report, too.
Don't, I apologize. I already wanted to make the review tonight, because I got it in pretty tardy. It had been done and I just didn't attach it when I brought in the plans the first time, so I apologize. But that is the IT trips per the, you know, national standards.
Hundred seventeen, hundred and seventy trips for fourteen lots. Has that increased dramatically? Has it been a big increase in the, generated? When you see that, you know, Amazon delivery, food deliveries.
Yeah, no, it's pretty much the standard. You know, they, they figure on the average family with kids, you're going in and out, you know, up to four times a day, times, you know, that many trips, so.
How about the, the non-family ones I was thinking about?
Yeah, yeah. Well, they, they kind of average them all together still.
They're at my house all the time.
So, the only thing that caught my attention is I was reviewing water and everything. I see the wells are pushed out, outside of the, like, the design space. They're not into the conservation area, but they're in that, like, fifty-foot buffer, it looks like, from, is it fifty feet?
The radius, yeah.
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 Well, not the radius itself, the wells are outside of the, the building envelope for the design build envelope. And I was, it was one of those, I was looking at it, I was trying to get a little clarification in the regulations, if that is in or out.
I know, it was, we did the same thing on the Malibu Road when the bending broke and it was, it was an issue, because those are basically the same-sized lots, so. Long as the well head doesn't go usually out of the property line, but the radii can.
Right, but the, the heads are out of the, the, the building envelope and into the, right up against the edge. And you've got one that's completely in the, the existing home is completely outside of that and in the conservation area, which is directly a no in our regulations.
Who's that?
The existing one.
It's lots fifty-seven one.
You have the first lot on the right. This is page seven.
That's a, that one's existing. I think that's what you're trying to reuse.
Right, but you're setting up a, a new zone and you're putting a well in an area that's specifically by our regulation.
But it's a pre-existing feature.
But you're changing, you're redesigning the lot layouts. It's not a pre-existing feature when you're redoing the lot layouts. You're changing your, your division and our regulations specifically say that you can't do that under common open space may not be provided for individual or community water or sewage systems required to service.
So, you would recommend that he gets a.
Parents nine.
A variance to decrease the hundred-foot setback?
Or.
To make it ninety feet, so that well would fit right into his property?
Or adjust the buffer so that it fits. You got a regulation. If you have a regulation, follow your rules.
Okay.
Like, we're the board, that's our job.
I can talk to the client, they could always drill a new well. Seems kind of crazy, but.
I, I just.
The buffer can't be changed, that's zoning, so.
Oh, you, you're right. You're, you're going your hundred-foot setback on it.
Yeah.
Then request a waiver from it.
Yeah, if that's in the, I'm, I'm trying to think what review, which board would, wouldn't be a variance? Would be a waiver?
It would be the zoning board of adjustment, because it's in the.
Yeah.
For the perimeter buffer.
Yeah, because it's in zoning.
Well, maybe as you look into it to see if there's any clarification on pre-existing well.
Yeah.
It's not, you're changing, like, don't, our job is to uphold the rules.
I understand.
Like, let's just do our job. That way, we don't play bias with anyone.
That's true.
Believe we have to go to get approval for the existing structure anyhow. Taken.
You mean, because it's.
Slightly within the buffer, if I recall.
Yeah, it's in the setback. Yeah, it's in the setback. Yeah, maybe you can just do that whole lot.
In the adjustments.
Make that an open space lot. We would have to have, yeah.
It's just, like, I end up feeling like I end up being, pardon the expression, but the hard ass, because we've got rules that we're set to follow.
That's on your T-shirt.
Yeah. And, and yet, nobody else, like.
You're good at it.
No, it's good.
I don't like it. It's like, I'd rather they come in and they just are compliant and then we move forward.
But we offered a solution. Go to the, that whole lot has to be adjusted, so. Guess that's the easiest way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any questions on the revised yield plan? Anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, push it out of the.
Push it up a little bit.
The well and spot, yeah. Anybody have any more questions?
No, I just think we should double-check, like, the well, wells on the other lots as well, because when I was looking at it, I was questioning if they were in the right place, because they're outside of the building envelope and into the setback envelope.
I guess my only comment would be not about what you're bringing forward, but, you know, our preferred diagrams around conservation subdivisions are to break it, break the houses up a little bit and clusters and not have them all, all the lots the same. And there's not much of a, I don't know how much of a buffer, if you can maintain any natural buffer between these lots.
And, and, which is why we've gone, you know, so diligently into the yield plan, that the hardest one of this one, really, the limiting factor is road regulations, where we're really at the extent where we can't go any longer with the road to create these big green spans between, like, pods, where we're really kind of limited due to the parent
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to continue this.
Please.
Later date. What's the next?
January seventh is the next planning board meeting.
Okay. Sound good? I'll make a motion to continue this to the January seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Captain, aye.
Captain, yellow.
All right.
Just go on.
Andy. January seventh.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, and to address the board, just to let everybody know, the plans and all the associated documents, including the one received today, were sent over to CMA today. They, as soon as the task order is signed, they have about two weeks to review to get those comments back. You'll see those comments as well as the applicant.
Okay. Let folks clear out here.
Everybody needs a dowser?
Really? Man of many talents.
For many years, it was out in the sessing, eight hundred feet and dry, by a pounded
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I was looking at your, I guess, the plans that you sent in seem to be pretty well similar to the initial plans. You did add one plan showing the driveway. Pull that up here. I did have a couple of questions. Again, we did request that you provide a drawing that's generally just includes the wetlands and the wetland buffers, so that we could get a bit of sizing. Also requested that you provide the size of the wetlands?
Yes, it depends on which pocket I have the size areas. The total wetland pockets that were delineated are eighteen thousand square feet, but it's broken up into different pockets. So, it's a matter of, I have the information, I can buy the information, I can put it on the plan, but I wasn't exactly sure if you wanted it labeled, if you want each little pocket.
Did communicate that to you? Okay. Guess we didn't know that. If I look at the driveway, in the driveway encompass is more than the hot top, correct?
I'm sorry?
The driveway encompasses more than just the hot top surface.
Correct.
It's thirty-two feet wide.
Ah, it's twenty feet wide. And then, we had to do. We had to do.
The breakout.
I see, yeah, I see the twenty, that is the surface of the road. The disturbed area, which is the area between the two undisturbed areas, is thirty-two feet. Do we agree on that?
Okay.
That includes a five-foot slope, three-one slope, includes the road itself, five, ten, fifteen, twenty feet, includes three feet. On the right side is the slope, three-one slope, one slope, one foot in the swale and then three feet as the swale comes up, thirty-two feet. One slope, uh, one foot in the swale and then three feet as the swale comes up, thirty-two feet. If we look at the drawing of the wetlands, as best we can ascertain, because it's so small, it appears that. Oh, oh, somebody, oh, okay. Mine's actually. The, is the, that's only, is that big too? That's not big, all right, yeah, I was actually looking for the original. You got real plans, too?
Yeah.
Yeah. If we look at the plan that has the, the original plan. And we look at the side setback for the new lot, which is thirty feet, correct?
Okay.
On the first, closest to the road area between the two wetlands, it appears to be only about twenty feet wide. Of the area outside of the wetlands. You agree on that?
If that's what you're saying.
And I'm wondering how you got a thirty-two foot disruption through there without getting a wetlands, um, crossing from the DES.
Because it's a total of eight thousand and fifteen square feet of buffer impact and we're not touching the wetlands. We're gonna have to get a wetlands permit from DES.
That, that's all I need to know, you gotta get the permit, okay, that's not our business, that's the state, right?
It's for the culverts to allow drainage to run in that area.
Right, okay. We were just concerned that there was nothing mentioned that before that you were gonna get the wetlands, wetlands permit.
Okay.
Uh, any questions?
I, I guess I have a bunch of questions and it starts with, when I look at a nine-six on it, it's an impact for it, and if you go right through the criteria of nine-six-one, nine-six-one A, one B. It specifically talks about that a review of reasonable alternative, alternatives have been determined, it's a proposed lot, there is no lot, so there, none of the reasonable alternatives are even being vetted in this. Just saying, hey, we wanna come in and disturb the wetlands, cool.
We're not disturbing the wetlands.
Well, you're getting a wetland crossing, so there will be a disturbance to the.
There is not a wetlands crossing, we're asking for a wetlands permit, when you get to that point, to insert a culvert to allow drainage to go through. We're not crossing wetlands, we're not disturbing wetlands.
Once again, your thirty-two feet is gonna try to squeeze through twenty feet of buffer. In order to do that, you have to impact the wetlands that are adjacent to that buffer. Just my opinion.
What am I saying, that's a wetland crossing right there, right?
That's the way I see it, too, there's a wetland crossing.
The, the engineer at my office and I sat down, we're not crossing wetlands.
Right here, if it comes from the street through here.
Well, the big one right here, this is the, this is it, right?
Is the, is the proposed retaining walls? Yeah, there's wetlands there, but I'm up here right now.
Over the wetland.
That's only.
Not crossing a wetland?
That right there was crossing a wetland.
Yeah, okay, I get that, but I'm, I'm, we gotta get to the first one first.
Okay, go to the first one. So.
He's got, he's showing a twenty-foot hot top, right? But he's not showing the additional twelve feet of disturbance between this point.
And this point.
And this point.
Yeah, I agree with that. This goes directly across, I think there's no question there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How are you coming up with twenty feet of hot top?
Oh.
The road itself is ten feet wide, through the wetland buffer is ten feet.
Um, well, it was hard to determine that. You've got five, ten, fifteen, twenty feet of road, a driveway.
That way it's gotta be twelve, right, twelve, it's gotta be twelve.
Yeah, but it. This is what I got here, this is what he's showing, and it appears to be paved. And that's twenty feet, right? Five, ten, fif-. Okay. Just trying to get everybody to agree on the, what we're seeing on paper. You disagree with that? This is the drawing you, you presented.
The driveway cross-section.
Cross-section of the drawing is five, ten, fifteen, twenty feet above the gravel that you're adding, right there, that's a disturbance, correct? Look at, look at the, the little blocks above the pavement, is that twenty feet? On your, on your illustrate, no. Is that twenty feet or not?
That is, yes, that is a cross-section.
Okay, so it's twenty feet, right, of the, from the class-five road through the whole driveway?
Saying that you are ten feet wide here. Typical of your road surface, and then you have five feet on either side in the typical area.
Okay, and then you have, and then you have disturbed areas to the left and right of that.
If you need to create slopes out, yes, you'll have a disturbance.
Okay. So the total disturbed area is thirty-two feet, if needed.
If needed.
What are the totals there?
Okay. All right, well, we're only here for the nine-six, so.
Mr. Chairman, um, also, um, when the board is ready to con, um, consider or not consider, the application is completely stopped to consider that.
Yeah, we have all that to do, right? Down the rabbit hole. Okay. Okay.
And there's also a waiver for consideration.
Yeah, I got the waiver off the last one, because you don't have the word. Okay, any more questions before we provide, uh, proceed with the waiver? Hearing now.
What's the waiver request?
Right here.
Uh, sure.
When you say the waiver, are you talking about the nine-six?
No, he's talking about, uh, only doing, only doing the wetlands litigation on the, the lot to be developed.
That was in the last, uh, the last packet.
Oh, I don't, I may have that one here with me, I.
It's, it's on the blue section, it's in the blue page.
Appken is asking for a waiver from five-point-three-point-one parentheses nine, waiver to all wetlands on the lot. A portion of the wetland has been flagged in regard to the proposed lot, the remaining lot is already developed and the wetland areas are not flagged on this portion. The language, um, language, uh, to include approval of the waiver, not granting the waiver, would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Is there a motion to grant the waiver?
Well, you wanna discuss it for us?
Sure, you can discuss it.
Um.
And we gotta do public, public comment, too, so.
Yeah, I, this one, I think. Per Andy, I mean, you have, if this was a regular lot, we require everything to be done to avoid the. The wetlands, in the wetlands buffer. Um, and I think if this is a developed lot, the, the waiver request is put in there is sufficient, the problem I have, I think I've seen what Andy has, is the lot's not, the lot is not a existing lot.
But I think that what the, the waiver is on the, the, this, this portion, right, okay, go ahead, sure.
This lot can be put anywhere. You know, so if you can put it anywhere on the big lot, why are we putting it somewhere where the wetlands can be avoided? So, to me, what Andy said is you gotta do everything possible to avoid wetland buffer impacts. Why can't you put this lot somewhere else on the lot that doesn't require wetland impacts? So, to me, seeing where the wetlands are on the whole lot, to see if there's another way around it to avoid any impacts. You know, we're talking about the, this is a lot, but the lot can be anywhere, and that has not been defined yet, and I think doing the wetlands on the whole thing to see where they are, so if, see if this can, this lot can be put somewhere else, subdivided off somewhere else to avoid the wetlands, is where I would need to be in order to prove this claim.
I'm also concerned in the sense that the driveway is right up against the lot line for the most part.
Mm-hmm.
You, you go twenty feet beyond that, it's like it doesn't exist, you don't know anything that happens beyond that point, and I think it's imperative that you have that information.
I mean, I think, is, is this, this lot also, is this the same, same order in the Stratford side, too, so this is one big lot that also goes into Stratford?
No.
No, it's not, so it ends at the, it ends right there in the property, at the timeline?
Yeah, it ends at the timeline.
Yeah, I guess my question, for example, would be, up at the split where Garland breaks off of that cane in, could you put the driveway there and do like a backlot to avoid any wetlands impact at all?
Right.
So, I think to say, we're not gonna map the wetlands in existing property, it'll make us the opportunity to look at alternatives to locate this subdivision somewhere else that may have no impact at all.
So if you go to the left side of the lot, all you need is seventy-five foot frontage, you could put it as a backlot.
You may avoid wetlands impact altogether.
And the other piece that I look at, is when you look at the driveway, you've got a ten percent slope going up the driveway.
Which means town regulations.
It's right at the limit.
And it meets town regulations, it could be at the limit all at once.
You, you're right, but you're requesting a driveway in an area for a lot that is not an approved lot and has not been offered as an approved lot at this point.
So, as the grandfather, who owns all twenty-six acres, wants to give the five acres to his grandson, grandfather still owned it, it's been in the family for, since nineteen forties. Uh, currently has a garage out back, currently, you know, a long area, but like keep. Backland. Give him the wooded area, grandson, it's all staying within the family, and that's the intent.
Well, if, if you did a backlot, you only need seventy-five feet, so it seems to me you could throttle that along property line, still get a backlot in there. Yep, yep. Mm-hmm. And.
Don't have line of sight, you don't have proper line of sight. Go to C three hundred feet either direction, because you're now looking up that road, blocked by the tree.
We just pull on Garland Road, right, so, and you pulled the stop sign to get a backhand, so, you'd have a stop sign there. Balance public safety, but has the COMCON opined on this?
Haven't seen one.
Conservation Commission from, um, October twenty-fourth. Actually, they were, they were part of the TRG, um, they had concerns with the wetland drainage, item two, nine-point-six will be needed for the new lot, obviously. Conservation Commission meeting on ten-twenty-four to discuss the case file, it was mentioned that the culvert will need to be installed for the driveway installation, following a review, the CC had no further comments.
So, do we iterate for the concerns with the wetland drainage, I didn't, couldn't determine how the drain flowed, um, because it wasn't all, um, represented on there.
I guess, you know, to make, to do everything possible to avoid wetland impacts and wetland buffer impacts, I don't think we've seen that yet. I think that, what you're saying needs to be documented in a more clear way, that there's, this is the way, where it's gotta be. And then we've, we've subdivided before where the, you know, you gotta have wetlands crossings in, in.
I know we have.
But in this case, can we locate the lot somewhere else that doesn't have that, that's, so, it's not this lot cannot have wetland impacts, it's question is, can the same lot size be placed somewhere else with none?
Be up to Mr. Garland and his grandson, then, um, because at this point in time, this is how they proposed to come through it, David Lane reviewed it all, says yes, our wetlands are to continue off, but I wasn't after it, and basically just going through this area up to the back.
I think it's just an established lot, what's been presented is sufficient, but the fact it's not established lot, so the question becomes, step ahead of that, where can this, is there a possibility to put this lot somewhere else on this property that doesn't require any wetlands impact? I think that's, that's where I'm at.
The other piece, when I look at, when you look at the, the, um, the profile plan, the, the, if you notice where the two biggest depressions are in that, where, which are going to be the fill areas, they are both right around where those wetlands are.
That is correct.
So.
And you're putting culverts in there, and you're putting stone retaining walls in there, and you're not impacting the wetlands.
Yeah, but I, you know, I think that, if this is an established lot, Andy, we've approved stuff like this before.
Yeah.
Every, every.
Because we made to minimize it, but this is not an established lot.
Right.
So, my question gets back to.
So I understand what you mean by established.
The new lot is not a, is not an existing lot of record.
Oh, the proposed lot is not a record.
So my question is, can this new lot be placed somewhere else that has lower wetlands impacts? That's the question, and that has not been demonstrated to me sufficiently.
Okay, uh, there is no wetlands impact, that's, you guys keep hanging up on, so I wanna make sure.
Same thing, we, we, town is buffer, and you're impacting wetlands buffers, I think you're impacting wetlands, but regardless, can you go somewhere else that doesn't have any?
And if we have a chance to get it done before the snow flies, and we are impacting buffers elsewhere.
Then you could come back to this plan, if you, if you still, this subdivision plan is the lowest impact, you're good, to me. Maybe, you put it to me, so, but I think that, is the question, I'm still, where I'm still having an issue is, can you put this same lot somewhere else on the property with no impacts? And I think that needs to be demonstrated.
I'll let them know.
So are we going.
Does everybody agree with that, maybe you should take another look at this? At the consensus?
Cause if we accept it as. You're looking for votes on items that are, or you're requesting to accept it as.
Yeah, it's not complete if you, questions, right?
If we don't accept the waiver, which I would.
Right. Gotta have the waiver to get the application.
Yeah, yeah.
One step at a time.
So, since you're dis- discussing, not, give us one more thing, uh, um, for the waiver portion. Since you discussed it, do you want to make a motion to, for public comment or anything like that, or you just don't wanna, have to vote on it either, I guess either way? Or not? I mean, it sounds like you're not, I'm looking for a motion to not accept the waiver, then.
Do we accept it complete?
No, because you have to accept the waiver or not.
Gotta do the waiver, that's.
We got a waiver, then, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Open it for public comment on that, and then Barbara has a question.
All right.
Do you wanna wait?
They asked for before, so he supplied it, I think he's got enough information here to accept the application as complete, that's my opinion, I'm probably wrong, but.
I would still, I'm still gonna vote no in favor of the waiver. Not accept the waiver.
So not accepting the waiver makes the application not complete.
Right.
So, at this point in time, if you don't accept the waiver and deny the waiver, do I have to re-ask for another waiver if there's wetlands on the other side, or are we just gonna keep this game going?
Well, I guess, um, you come back with the plan showing that if there are wetlands there, I guess at that point we will discuss it.
Then I have to re-submit another application.
Yep.
I mean, if there are wetlands there, if you can show that that's better, has lower impact, you can still come back with the same plan, you, you gotta demonstrate that you're trying to do your best to avoid the wetlands, and where this lot can be anywhere on the big lot, that needs to be demonstrated.
To prevent you from submitting another application, you can request the continuation at this point and not have a.
Well, cause, that's fine, I'll ask for continuance, I mean, is, is the owner's intent to give that land to the south to his son, grandson, that's where it's at, it doesn't matter, the grand schemes of it all, so.
Well, just as you mentioned, most of that lot around the, uh, area around the garage is grass, so it's probably not wetlands in that area.
That's an assumption.
Of course it is, but it's probably not a ten percent grade, but it could be, I suppose, it could be wetlands, too, he may be mowing in the wetlands, I don't know.
The pitch running up on that side is. A bit more manageable, it's.
It appears to be, just from the cursory look, but.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification for myself.
Yep.
So, and maybe for the.
So, and maybe for the applicant, are you asking the applicant to survey the entire parcel? Is that what I'm hearing?
Probably.
And then reconfigure to base on those results?
That's 26 acres all the way out back, and we're not even touching that area.
Or, I mean, you should probably give him a little bit more guidance on like what more of the lot is...
So what would probably be an option is to do a 75-foot frontage on the road on the far side off the buffer, off the setback, behind, on the other side of the garage.
Up here.
Huh?
You're saying 75 feet up here?
Well, where else is it? The whole, to the right of that area, on the part, on the pending parcel that's the parent lot, is all wetlands too, isn't it? Buffers.
Well, let me put it this way, we're not saying do that, but we're saying, it appears to us that that could be done and minimize the wetlands impacts. We don't know, but that's our question, we don't know, and we're saying, you know...
Come back and show us, that's all.
Come back and show us.
So if I show you the wetlands, and show you the buffer, and it might be more plausible here that it's less impact, but for safety, it doesn't make sense. From a straight-up safety standpoint, it doesn't make any sense, because you can't see line of sight. But we'll go through this step to show you that there's no wetlands or anything over there, but we're just going through semantics of line of sight and you don't have safety issue. So we're going to require them to spend money to do something that's a pure safety issue. That's fine, if you want to go down that road.
Is that what the consensus of the board is? To see what's on the other side?
I think you're, it's a hard, it's a hard ask right now, and it's not our job to tell the applicant how to go do it. Our, we have expressed our concern about it, we have voiced that. That is up to the applicant at this point, that's not us. Our job is to follow the regulation.
Yeah, I looked at it, Dave Lane's thing, yeah.
I mean, I don't think, to me, there's not a big problem with line of sight, you're turning right and hitting a stop sign. Anyway.
So you would have them exit on Garland?
Yeah.
So exiting on Garland, the sight line to the left would be fine, there's a stop sign on the right as you turn into...
Yeah, anybody coming that way, you can't see, it's going to be on the side, so you're not going to hit, you're not going to...
Under Corbett, which is a relatively low volume road anyway.
Yeah, I drove up there, and yeah, there's not much going on up there.
Yeah, I think we need to see...
Wetlands on the front portion of the lot, and which development around the farmhouse is what you guys want to see. Unless you want to go all the way out back to the back 26 acres and do that back.
We want to see if there's any options that reduce the impacts of the wetlands.
In the front, so we can say in the front and be definitive on the front section of the property.
You can demonstrate there's no reasonable options to do it without any wetlands impacts, and, you know, we want the one that, we want to be shown different options that expect the wetlands buffer.
So you want to continue, date to continue this? Motion to continue?
Yes, I would ask the applicant if second would give him, or, I'm sorry, seventh would give him?
I might have to wait until next spring, depending on how fast the frost hits ground. That provided what the board asked for, and now we wasted in the month, so I will see what can be done. And if it can't be done, then I'll have to wait until May.
Okay, so we will continue until an unknown date?
And we'll ask for next month, and we'll see what happens next month.
All right.
Go to the seventh, if you...
Go to the seventh, and if you need to change it, we'll change it.
So to clarify, you're asking him for redesign, not for additional wetland?
Right, we're trying to...
Survey, okay, just want to make sure.
He's asking for additional wetlands.
Definitely in the shade, certainly on the access.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so make sure.
I would, I would also push the fact that if it's appropriate, that there's a redesign on it, like putting, creating a lot that runs through a wetland, and I say runs through because there is a wetland crossing on it, as well as a buffer impact on it, is not ideal. You don't, you shouldn't create lots with that mindset in play.
Right, so now the board is in the position of telling people how to design their lots in relation to where they put the lots. You're saying redesign it and now put it somewhere else where the grandfather wants it placed in a different location.
The board is in the position to hold applicants to the rules that the town has agreed to, our zoning ordinance and our regulate, zoning regulations.
I was on this board for five years.
Okay.
I know the rules.
Great.
You don't have to re-projetate it to me, that's why I'm trying to delineate it and make sure we understand what action goes where.
So then you also understand that you can't create a lot that is non-conforming right from the start.
It is conforming, it's got the frontage.
It does not, you're requesting waivers. If you're seeking waivers, it's non-conforming.
Don't approve any of the lots that come through with waivers.
Motion to continue this to the seventh.
Motion, I'll make that motion.
Well, second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Second, I. Nap, I.
Got the yellow one.
Ellen.
All right. All right.
Will you pass that down to Barbara?
All right.
Okay, next item is 234-77-GC-24, amended amendments, request site plan amendment to decrease the parking area from mixed-use detached structures.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, Scott, Colton, Bill, and Sushit, I'm actually filling in for Christian Smith this evening. And here with, with me as well is Mr. Thibodeau, owner and developer of the property. So a quick refresh to the board, I think as everybody knows, Mr. Thibodeau has an existing approved site plan for a six-unit multi-use development on Route 9. The board in front of you illustrates the approved plan. This is the original design. We have an elongated driveway, the darker squares are the actual multi-use units. We have a cistern in the front, fire retention area that takes care of the drainage, and then proposed septic in the back, and a large well out front. Mr. Thibodeau has looked at the design and is requesting a reduction of the actual footprint, which is a viable, very viable request. The end result would be the same amount of units, less impervious surface, and less buffer impact to the wetland buffer. So what we have here is basically the same kind of design, you have your same driveway in its same location with the crossing. Now, this is actually approved by NEFOT. The cistern remains the same up front, same fire retention area here, goes up to a driveway, basically in a T configuration with access to the units here. The main difference being, there's no longer drivable access to the rear of the buildings which we had before, which was the largest reason for the increase in pavement. I think this is actually a higher and best use of the property here. Biggest difference is now there is locate, there is access to both elevations in the buildings in one location being here in the front versus one in the front, and then one in the rear, and then having all that excess pavement. Just to give you an idea, I actually calculated out before coming tonight, it's actually almost 12,000 square feet reduction in impervious surface. That's close to, I think it was like close to 35% of the entire project, which is, that's pretty good, that's relatively, you know, big when it comes to drainage terms. In regards to this as well, we've reconfigured the grading here over by unit six. We were actually able to pull away some of the grading from that wetland buffer area there, so then we have a reduction of 360 square feet. It's my understanding, the Conservation Committee has looked at this, and obviously any time that you can increase the safety zone or buffer impact, reduce the buffer impact, they are happy with that, so we believe that they have a formal recommendation. Other than that, very simply, the drainage is all in conformance, goes to the same area, treated the same as it was before when it was approved. Very simple, in my mind, this is really not a major change, I know it requires an amended change, but it's all for the positive. I'll answer any questions you may have.
So parking spaces, how many did you have in the old plan compared to this one?
Let me see. Again, I might have to look some things up, because it's not my site plan. 27, yeah.
So there's a parking space on each, well, where are 27?
They're counting the garage space as...
You have one internal garage, one exterior garage, and then the additional stalls.
Have the buildings moved back on the lot? I'm, I'm trying to figure out how they, how, when I look at the old plan set and this wetland setback versus the new plan set, the building roadway seems to be not small, it doesn't look like it's changed much in size, yet it somehow is not in the wetland area, yet the parking area out front seems to be more impactful in that.
Yep, we were actually, we did slide the building back a little bit, we were able to do that. You don't have the necessity of providing the grades that were drivable now, without the pavement being in the rear, so we were able to change the elevations of the sills, which allowed us to grade that differently and reduce the buffer impact. The buildings on the left are relatively in the same spot, as you can see, they're kind of straight across in the newer design. The older the design, we kind of had a slant to them like this, because the, basically all of that was paved area in the rear. So they did slide back a little bit, but the overall disturbance was less.
The other item that I see is, I'm struggling with it's not a substantial change, because you're taking the building, and the building is a completely different design.
That change approved, I know the original one, I think, I'm with Andy a little bit, trying to remember how this evolved. Original plan had the commercial in the back, and that parking was commercial in the back, correct?
No, commercial in the front.
Residential in the back. The back, they had a porch in the back, entrance.
And the garage was a drive-around and drive-in on the upper level.
On the upper, okay, so there was... Like commercials.
Commercial's less obvious. Like a house.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I don't know if that's good or bad, but it doesn't...
This is a better residential plan, but it's been mixed up.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's, when I look at it, I'm like, I think the layout is better, I like it, but it, when I follow per our regulations, it doesn't follow the change in our regulation. And in fact, I even went back and looked, and the extension based on our regulation shouldn't even have been granted, because under 8.2.3, extensions may only be granted if there's no change to the zoning ordinance or the subdivision regulation current. So an extension was granted where we had a change in the regulation, and that shouldn't even have happened.
Does anybody understand what that meant? I do not.
What was the change?
The density changed in that area after it was approved.
It was the zoning difference.
Yeah, the zoning went from town center to village center.
Yeah. Which is a density change. So when you, when you follow per our regulation, we granted an extension that theoretically by our regulation should not have been granted, which, whatever, that, you know, that bullet's left the gun. There's nothing we can do about that now. But now we're looking at a substantial change to a plan set that is more than, that on a plan that's been approved and extended.
Mr. Nap, explain to me how it's been extended.
Think it's substantial?
Yes, absolutely. How is it? How has it been extended?
The building, the building is the same, it's turned 180 degrees, the commercial's still underneath where it was, the residential is still where it was, so nothing has changed other than the...
Reducing the pavement by 35%.
Right.
That's the whole, that's what I saw was the point, but...
And then to identify the commercial area from the residential, you see that the siding is a different texture and design, and then there's a placard on the wall of that door identifying the business. There's also a, there's also a walkway designated to that door of the commercial, as well as a walkway dedicated to the residential. So the buildings are, they're really the same.
Right, the commercial space shrinks in nature.
No, it does not. It's exactly the same size.
Similar, right?
It's the same size.
Trying to pull up the old plan set here, because the downstairs commercial, there, there was no, the garage was up above it, and the commercial...
Facing the other way.
Right, the commercial space came in all across the bottom.
You're right, so that was the vestibule going into the commercial space, which was the, that was the foundation wall of the garage, so it was about five feet wide. So what we did is we took the wall in the basement, separated commercial to residential, and pushed it back into the residential to make up for that space, that lost space. So it's actually the same exact square footage.
RSA 674, Section 39 provides site plans approved, planning board are exempt from changes in zoning ordinance for five years from the day of approval, provided active and substantial development has begun within 24 months. Since we are only seven months out from the approval, they are vested for the changes for at least another...
That's, that is, the RSA directly conflicts with our regulation.
That trumps, that trumps.
I hear you, but I'm telling you, it is directly in confliction with our regulation.
I know.
So we should go amend our regulation to comply with it.
Well, yeah, it's an RSA.
I'm agreeing, I'm saying the RSA is, trumps that, our regulation is incorrect.
In the planning board, the OPD planning board handbook mentions the five-year safe harbor to...
On something that's already, that development has started on, it is active and substantial, we haven't hit a 25% threshold, or a 50% threshold.
But we already gave them a one-year.
Say, the bullet has left the gun there. Okay, but when I, looking at it, like you can actually see, I don't know if anybody went back and looked at the old plan sets, like, the way it changes.
Right.
So...
Yeah, well, the garage obviously is on a topography, which substantially reduces that pavement 35%. Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
As I said, I think it's a better design, it's just when I look at our regulation, we're amending a site plan that's been approved, which I, I was trying to figure out, when I look at the regulation, how is that called out here? It's not clear in amending a site plan that's already been approved and extended. So I don't know if you've got something more, Vanessa, or...
Um...
The RSA, I guess.
I was referred to the RSA.
I was referred to the RSA to address those questions that he has five years from deletion for it.
So you said 674?
Uh, 674, 39.
Which one, 674, 39? Has it been recorded by the Regis, with Registry of Deeds?
It is the site plan.
They don't record site plans.
So the approval date is when the planning board chairs signs off on the plan.
While you're looking at that, I mean, I had a quick comment. On the narrative, at the very end it says separate deeds, which is good. I think that's what we're looking for. And...
You were absolutely right about that, Ron. There's actually three legal entities that missed that. Mine, yours, and someone else at the other end, at the other office.
But it says, you know, the commercial space may not be used as a home office. That should really say, you know, residential uses are not allowed. Not just a home office.
I think that was the intent.
That they were trying to...
Exposed with commercial space, residential uses are not allowed.
Correct.
Whether it actually happens or not. See, but that's a different story.
If it's not clear, I'll have her make it clearer.
I appreciate that.
Okay, sure.
I don't think he's changing any of the uses that were previously approved, though.
Well, it's mixed-use developments. It's got to be commercial and residential. This is the, that space is commercial space. It's got to be used in commercial purposes and they find no residential uses.
We define...
So that's, you know, for that, that particular piece.
In the approval, we defined just potential uses to have to conduct with rather broad categories, so you won't have to commit.
We did eliminate any kitchens or anything like that, though. Yeah, we didn't want to see that going on there. And in discussing this with, I talked to Connor about this and we talked about, well, I'm actually on that committee going next month, where the connectivity for the other town center projects, and we talked about being able to come into this lot and use these small commercial businesses, whatever they might be. So that's a benefit to the way that this is designed now versus it brings every, the sideline a lot more accessible in different areas to get to the commercial spot than it had before.
Yes, I'm reading.
Well, please look at that. I have a question because I volunteer for SCOR. We help small businesses. You, is there any way that we could help any tenant that comes into there that you're selling them as part of a sales process to help them get up on, up to speed? Or as a nonprofit organization that's sponsored by the Small Business Administration? We have a very active organization here that provides free business consulting and we help a lot of new businesses start up. One of the things I've been looking at is trying to figure out how we can take this, this expertise and pare it down and apply it to a certain situation like this. So that it's not just you're selling the space, but now we're also coming in together with some real expertise, volunteer expertise to help that. So whoever takes over that space become more efficient and effective in expanding their business.
So you're, you're offering to, to, to help guide, direct?
Whoever comes in.
Absolutely.
I don't know if there's a way for us to get together and talk about this.
Yeah, let's do that.
I think it's an important way because, you know, often with these small businesses, they're not successful. And for everybody involved, it would be best if they were. So trying to do anything we can to help.
Good. Thank you.
So I will say, like, if you read it specifically, when you, it says every subdivision plot approved by the planning board and properly recorded in the reg, in the Registry of Deeds, excuse me. And and every site plan approved by the planning board and properly recorded in the Registry of Deeds, if recording the site plan is required by the planning board or by local regulations, shall be exempt from the subsequent changes in subdivision regulations, site plan review, regulations, impact, fee ordinances, and zoning ordinances adopted by the city, town, or county in which there are local unincorporated towns or unrecognized places accept those regulations and ordinances which expressly, expressly protect public health standards such as water quality and sewage treatment requirements for a period of five years after the date of approval. Provided that, and then you get into the various items and you have, it runs through a list that I haven't even gotten all the way through at this point. But just getting into that, that first part, that it triggers, the way I read it is it triggers that. It says if recording of site plans is required. That's if it's required. We're saying it's not required. There's no recording of site plans, which is why I asked if there was a...
That is the Stafford County decision.
Yeah, they don't accept them. Mine is signed by the planning board.
They used to. In the past, they changed their regulations and it doesn't have math on it. They won't take the plan anymore. Brownings, Brownings used to require site plans as well. They don't do it anymore. Any more comments on this change of?
It's a quick one, I think. You have six units. How many of these parking spaces down below? Seventeen? Ten and seven is how I see one, two.
Well, there were 31. New plan is 27. Twenty-one are required.
The parking spaces down below is that, that's how I see. Ten and seven? Realistically, you got seven, you got husband and wife both working. First in is going to park in the garage. First in is usually first out. So the second in is not going to park in the driveway because the person, the parking, the parking spaces across. They got at least six spaces taken out of seventeen. Is that enough for any commercial activity?
Twenty-one are required. You have to hold them to 21.
Yeah, but we, this is changed from the 30, with a 30-something. So we could say no, we're going to hold the 31 if we wanted to. And I guess at the end of the day, I mean, I think we're making plans about the mixed-use development. Is it, I don't think it has successful driving any commercial. Don't think it's going to drive any here, you know. Is it a better residential, you know, at the end of the day, with the way it is, this new plan? Probably. That's what we're going to be, 100% residential? Most all. I don't think it's going to drive any. I guess at the end of the day, I think this is a better residential plan.
Well, suppose a guy buys a place and he just...
Commercial space I'm unhappy with, but I don't think that's their fault.
Suppose you, CPA buys the house, buys the thing. He's also going to take the commercial.
That'll be home office.
No, it's a business.
Well, you're going to have actual business down.
A professional business with a sign on the door.
Suppose it like he'd walk outside?
Well, you can walk downstairs because if you notice...
Now, he's just going to cut through the middle and go upstairs.
Well, if he's the owner of both areas, he'd have the key to both.
The bathrooms available to homes, so they are anticipating. You know, they're anticipating.
These are the things we can't worry about. It's none of our business.
I think, it's got to be residential and this is probably a better plan. I'm happy this, my commercial space.
Can I, um, yes, that's what I'm trying to get to. Can we take a motion to, make a motion to accept the application as complete?
I make a motion to accept the application as complete.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Present.
Captain L O Y.
I don't know if it's complete. It means I'm here. That's it.
So it's an abstention.
Yeah.
Yay.
No. Oh, for you, yes. Sorry, I thought you were saying for me.
All right, looks like we have four.
Four, one.
Right.
Four, zero, and one.
Hey, I got to open and close public comment on this, so let's, oh. Are you trying to figure out how to treat him?
It's just, I'm, I'm saying I'm present. I'm not saying I vote in favor of it. Would you like, yeah, it doesn't matter.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry. Please continue.
I am opening public comment. Anybody online?
Is anybody online would like to speak for or against this application? Please let me know. You can unmute yourself if you would like to speak. Mr. Chairman, I...
Okay, I'm closing public comment. Additional comments by the board prior to going to the NOD? Yeah, just...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you please open that public comment once again to see if anybody in the audience?
Oh, sure. I am opening public comment.
Does anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against it? I just knew.
Okay, let's keep it. Closing public comment.
No, she's coming up.
Oh, she is. I didn't see the hand raised. Sorry. I beg your pardon.
I didn't raise it. I just got up. Hi, Sue Morrison, Secretary of State, Senator Franklin Peters. I just want to, just to clarify that the changes are going to I mean, it sounds like it's, it's all going to be, is a better fit for us as well, even though I'd still like to say six units is still too many units. I just want your opinion as to whether or not are not going to adversely affect us. Any, any new ways, you know, all of our concerns are still... I think your concerns were a lot around lighting and how much glare.
Screening, green, green.
Probably better. Cars aren't going up there. I mean, you guys are, you know, more experienced at this than I am.
Well, we're just looking at the plan. The plans maybe provide a little screening.
Right, I think you had agreed to that.
It would mostly be the units to the far left, I guess.
Yeah, I spoke with Susan on site and I agreed that if we see any issues, we have a handshake agreement. I'll put over there any trees or plantings that, that we can agree on to satisfy any issues that might come up.
Right. Original decision had specific less-keeping plans.
Yeah, it needs to have. Because it aims directly.
The headlight sweeps and stuff, we were...
It was then. Now the headlights are much further back and go way behind our house, yeah.
But still, we had an agreement first time.
But, but I'm not sure that eliminates the mandatory screening.
We had an agreement in the original plan, the headlights sweeps and stuff, that's for vegetation. It's screening, so I think that's still...
Yeah, that still stands.
Yeah, all the additional comments from before are still going to be considered valid as far as this decision.
Amendment to...
Was there anything besides headlights? Oh, yeah, the wetland buffers.
Yeah, so the buffer decreased, the impact on the buffer.
I mean, that's what it sounds like to me because it, because it did mean, but I just you guys expanded this. I know.
From there.
A stormwater runoff if you reduce pavement by 35%.
Is there anything else? Was anything else we talked about that was concerns for you? Yeah. I mean, I have, well, I don't think there's anything new, but I just make sure that... You just want to hear it verbally. That I'm not missing anything but changes that would adversely affect us. Doesn't sound like it, but checking to make sure that. Thank you.
And it's just behind the house, all that area that would have had turnarounds and everything, even to allow a fire engine in. That would be undisturbed, right, except for what's needed for the septic. So that would be a buffer of any block behind too. Okay. Any more board comments?
I, I have...
Oh, yeah, I got to close public comment.
I have a public comment. I have one item I'd like to just be read into the record so folks are aware of it.
Okay.
Under 674, 39, A, I believe it is, 39, 674, 39, under notice, notes of decision, when you move to number three, changes in site plan, it very specifically says any development pursuant to a site plan amendment that substantially changes the plan is by definition not in accordance with the terms of the original approval and therefore clearly does not fall within the protection of the exemption under RSA 674 dot 39, which is what you referenced earlier. Specifically noting accordingly seeing no ambiguity in RSA 674 dot 39, the court declined to apply the administrative loss doctrine, Harborside Associates versus City of Portsmouth, 163 NH 439, 42A, 3D, 858, 2012 NH Lexus 38, NH 2012. So it has specifically been called out in there that it is not applicable where there is an active and substantial change to the site plan.
Substantial change?
You think this is substantial?
Yeah. I do. That is a substantial change. So if you look at the definition of substantial change or substantial construction, depending on how you read it, they actually talk about substantial construction in the standard, but if we look at in our regulation, I think it just says, I don't know if we actually define it. Regulation.
The modifications of the MTS we just looked at on the subdivision.
Looking to see if...
Clearly defined for site plans. We are probably using...
I guess for me, I'm unconvinced it's substantial given the lead. I'm not, I'm not with you on that one.
How does that not mean?
You know, substantial change.
It's more of a deletion than a change. I mean, something out.
So what do you call that then?
B.
Maybe a change?
Substantial change? I call it change.
Oh my, we could debate this for a long time.
Good, but maybe you want to change your life.
I guess.
I guess if the square footage of the buildings changed, it was remarkable substantial change to that. No change to stormwater apparently, right? You're not going to go back and change any storm. No, typically in something like this, when we relate to AOT, they look at it the same way. Substantial for them is when the drainage changes.
Right.
Anytime that change is substantial.
Right.
This is relatively staying the same.
They increased...
If it was the way it is to propose a date, but then propose to put it behind, additional parking behind, would that be substantial?
I think taking it out is, it's funny to say putting it in is substantial, taking out is not. But I, I think that's why they get it.
So it's not them having changed, it's just...
I think the spirit of the ordinance.
You're taking something out, probably that's substantial. Now they, now they have location of the building somewhat. Strong dragon for that, I think, but I, I don't...
A field change?
It means they already would have started with a field change.
I, like, as I said, I think the plan is better, but I think if we're following the regulation, it is a substantial change.
I'm not with you on that.
All right, so we need a definition at some point of substantial.
Well, is it a positive substantial change or a negative substantial change?
That doesn't matter. We do not have the right to define that by the regulation.
I bet if you went into that court decision.
It doesn't, the court decision specifically said... It doesn't, the court decision specifically says it defines a substantial change. That's it. It doesn't say positive, negative, one way or the other. The rules are the rules, and you have to apply them unequivocally.
I don't think it's substantial.
I don't either.
You wanna vote a substantial change, or is that where...
I'm sorry, if you would like to, I'm sorry, you need to come up to the microphone.
No, that's fine.
Will, will we open the public comment now?
No, no, we don't. We finished public comment.
So...
We, we...
Maybe we should pull the board and see who thinks it's a substantial change, and that might resolve it.
There you go. Right, right.
Raise your hand if you think it's a substantial change.
You have, you have going presence?
Yeah, I'll be present here, too, for this one.
So it's gonna be five presents?
Andy, where do you start it? We've been, what is your vote? I know your vote is substantial.
I think it's a substantial change.
Uh, no, I don't think it is.
I don't think it's substantial.
Maybe we should define it somewhere.
Three, zero, and one.
It's the NOD.
Three, one, and one.
Get them to be quiet.
No vote.
That's three, the two.
We ready to proceed with the notice?
Majority says no substantial.
We ready to proceed with the notice of decision?
I am.
Okay. Yep, uh, who wants to make that motion to go with the notice of decision? Remember, we don't read them anymore.
What are we doing, approving it?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the notice of decision?
Yep.
I'll second that. Roll call.
I'm gonna be present here.
Neither need a yay, nay, or abstain, please.
Abstain.
No, I think we're opening ourselves up to legal peril.
Uh, I vote yes.
Yay.
Yes. Three and two, whatever.
You're both abstaining.
Abstain, no.
Abstain.
One abstain, one no, and three yays.
Pass, board?
Yes. Congratulations.
I gotta tell you.
No, no, don't be...
Never mind. I won't do it on a microphone.
Stop selling your bid to sale.
Now, if he has an accident on the ride home.
All right, I'm more than willing to take any and all criticism, and if you wanna come see me, you can gladly share it with me.
All right, good luck with your project. We say that for everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, one more thing. They're not all gonna be yellow, though, right?
No, I, um, just came on the screen that I like.
Earth tones would be good with that green area. You're not gonna cut... Well, you know, in San Francisco has the Seven Sisters, you know, those famous houses on the street there? Those are a little too urban, but maybe in earth tones would be nice. Rather than bright pink and bright yellow and...
Do you actually like the yellow?
I like yellow. I like it.
I like the color. I like the color of my...
Is this fitting with that rural aesthetic or rural character?
I have a yellow house.
I had a yellow house in Arlington for forty years.
That's hypothetical, Stan.
But let's, uh, let's, we're still in the meeting here, um...
What do we have, any ex...
We don't approve color.
No, we don't do color.
We have...
Well, it's, well, we can...
Is there any other business?
We do have, yeah, site plans, we can, go ahead.
It's okay. Is there any, um, I didn't have any updates for anybody, um, other than other business. I did wanna mention something about the, um, attorney is still reviewing the questions to do the ballot.
Okay.
Um, questions for zoning, but I would like to discuss, um...
Quiet, please.
Um, potential backup dates if there's a weather inclement, you know, like if it snows or power outage or something. On the seventeenth, the eighteenth, the day after is zoning board, so that's a conflict. Would the nineteenth be a conflict with anybody, which is a Thursday?
In January?
Of December. For like a weather, in case there's a weather inclement...
So we go from Monday to Tuesday to the seventeenth, right?
So let's say there's a weather event on the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Um, the next day would, the Wednesday is, I can't do it because it's DBA Thursday. Would do that, or do we just want, we can push it until January to get it done? So, as, as long as I have a quorum.
Now, are they, are they gonna be...
I'm hoping they're gonna be done this week, is what I was told, so if not, we're just gonna, I'll let everybody know. We'll be pushed to January.
Did you, just for my own clarity, did you, did we put in the lot size adjustment, or did you not submit that?
To the, um...
I had submitted it in my notes.
So let me back up. Um, are you talking about the conservation subdivision or the other two that we discussed?
Just going to three acres.
No, those, those went.
Okay.
Did, the, that one and the, um, the two that, that was discussed in the meeting minutes. Those went forward to her to draft, too.
I just didn't see them come through.
Okay, I'll send out, um, what was the...
And as a reminder, we had the...
Yeah, no, I might not be here.
We, we get the subcommittee on the septic and the...
Yes.
That's resolved.
Yeah, that was resolved. And the, um, conservation subdivision, um...
Yeah, there was some, Scott had issued with something, nothing with mine.
It got resolved. They were, they were talking about two different, sort of kind of two different things, but related.
Oh, yeah, that's on the shoreline thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, and then the consultants for the conservation subdivision did put in the, um, the increase in the minimum lot size and all those recommendations that we had. Um, I can send those out to you guys to look at. I didn't know if you wanted to see the unfinished draft. I can send that out. That's not a problem.
Send it to us.
It just, they won't have the ballot questions, of course.
I just was one concern that the things we has agreed to before the consultants came in, that's still firm. Everything we agreed to, nobody's, I know the lawyer...
Not yet, not yet. Um, I know there was a little bit of discussion more of density, and I'll, I'll circulate that document. I thought Connor was going to, um, send it out.
Density, density bonus? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not...
We did report, too.
Yeah, I thought we decided we didn't wanna do that yet.
Maybe next year. No, they wanted twenty, we wanted thirty. We went with thirty, but he's, they were suggesting also make a density bonus if certain things were done. Remember that, that we discussed.
Right, but I thought the mood is...
Yeah, and I relayed that.
They don't think we need to do a density.
I know. I relayed that to the consultants when they resubmitted their, um, the changes from the meeting, that the board didn't support any of the density changes. I know they, Connor still wanted to talk to the lawyer, but...
Um, how many days do they need for the...
I need it.
Ten?
I think it's...
Well, you need twelve, because you can't come a bit for the day post.
Right, so...
So they gotta hurry up.
Otherwise, it's January.
Yeah.
Um...
Yeah, let's get this done in December if we can.
I'm trying. I'm pushing.
So the seventeenth is the snow day?
But is anybody, um, what's the day after? I think the day after that is, isn't it, um...
Oh, it's the calendar right here.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-first, is it closed, the thirty-first? No, it's closed, the first.
The first. So could also offer, I don't know if anybody is gonna be wanting to be here on New Year's Eve, though.
I won't be around. I can already tell you that.
So, the meeting is on the seventeenth. Is everybody free on the nineteenth or twentieth if we need it?
So we're going to the seventeenth and then the nineteenth?
Do the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, is it good?
It's gonna be a snow day.
I put the nineteenth in my calendar. I can't promise it because...
Okay, well, that's, we can only, that's all you can do.
And worst-case scenario, I guess, we'll just do the seventh.
Nineteen looks good for at least four of us.
And then first...
But it's either, either Monday or Thursday.
And we can't get it advertised properly. It'll be the seventh of...
It'll be Tuesday.
January and the ninth of January.
Tuesday would be our...
Does anybody have issues with that, those dates? That's okay. The, um, the seventh and the ninth of January.
Seventh and the ninth?
So the seventh is the first Tuesday, and then the ninth would be the weather date in case...
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Also in case we need to have a second public hearing or something, but if for some reason...
When's the attorney gonna get the stuff back to you?
It should have been, it should be this week, like tomorrow or something.
Two weeks ago or a week ago?
A week ago?
She agreed to the first week of December, so... Yeah, so that's where we're at. Um, thank you for listening.
The, uh...
I'm sorry?
The first full week or, uh...
I was told the first, the first week, December.
Just trying to make sure I've got that.
I think we should start twenty-six zoning like in April.
I tried, no.
Give us plenty of time.
Tried. All right, thank you for listening and...
Happy to listen. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded, roll call.
Now, bar.
I'll be yellow eye.